Welcome back to the Unmasked Podcast where we are unmasking compromisers, cowards, and wolves. In this episode at least, showing you what faithful civil government is not, so that you may better understand what it is. I'm your host Tyler Long, my brother in Christ Joey Durants, and we are taking a slight pause right now from our normal topic of this season, which has been the church, to focus on important current events in our community of Battleground here, namely the city council meeting that occurred last Monday.
Yeah, that was a travesty.
Yes, so
So many regards.
Just a quick summary for those of you who are unaware, the City of Battleground was going to do a Pride proclamation for the month of June. They've done it in the past, but just like most things, people are starting to wake up. I think many Christians especially were under the assumption, naively so, that these people really did just want acceptance. They really did just want to not be bullied. And over the course of many years, as they are making incursions and inroads into libraries, into classrooms, into reading provocative material to kindergarteners with men in drag, that we realize that this is no longer the case. So it's not true that you can say, as the council tried to say, and we'll see that as we go on, that just because you didn't complain three years ago, that gives you no right to complain now.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so to set the stage, what we're going to do is this is going to be pretty much a reacts video. We're just going to play the videos in real time. There's not going to be a ton of organization, but there will be a teaching portion at the end where not only will you get our commentary during the playing of the city council meeting, but we'll also go into detail at the end in terms of what God's word says about this, what God's word says about the proper role of government and how laws should be structured, right?
Yep.
But to set the context, let's talk about, well, I'm going to let them talk about it. And so we have a video of, it's titled "A Message From The Gay Community." It went semi-viral a couple of years ago. It's performed by the San Francisco Gay Men's Chorus. And this will give you an idea of the movement that we are dealing with when we discuss these things on this episode and at the city council meeting.
As we celebrate pride and the progress we've made over these past years, there's still work to be done. So to those of you out there who are still working against equal rights, we have a message for you.
You think we're sinful. You fight against our rights. You say we all lead lives you can't respect. But you're just frightened. You think that we'll corrupt your kids if our agenda goes unchecked. Funny, just this once, you're correct. We'll convert your children. Happens bit by bit, quietly and subtly, and you will barely notice it. You can keep them from disco. Worn about San Francisco. Make them wear pleated pants. We don't care. We'll convert your children. We'll make them tolerant and fair.
At first, I didn't get why you'd be so scared of us turning your children into accepting, caring people, but I see now why you'd have a problem with that.
Just like you worried, they'll change their group of friends. You won't approve of where they go at night to protest. Oh, and you'll be disgusted.
So gross.
When they start finding things online that you've kept far from their sight.
Like information.
Guess what? You'll still be alright.
Alright, I think that's quite enough, although the video does go on for over two more minutes. And a chorus of men joins them, and they're all wearing black shirts with the word "Proud" on them in rainbow colors. And so when you see Pride declarations, you must understand that the messaging comes from these people in this movement.
It's a military.
Yes.
And they're hijacking words and recreating definitions and using them to push their ideologies through under that guise. Is this the same thing that happened in Genesis 3? Did God really say, "Does this really mean this?" And it's the twisting that sin does. Tolerant, fair, accepting.
Yes, they cloak their evil in words that engender a response of wanting righteousness.
Yeah, it's great marketing.
Rights, love, tolerant, fair, accepting, caring are the words that they said in just that short little clip, right? So, but what was their actual message? Number one, you don't know where they're going at night. They really are wanting to usurp the parent entirely. Your kids are no longer your kids, they're our kids.
Their actual message is being able to have sex with children.
A hundred percent, a hundred percent. That's where it's going.
That's what they're pushing for.
Yeah, they're denying it, but it's clear. Why do they have drag queen story hour with kindergarteners and not at old folks homes and not, you know, in the hospitals with terminally ill cancer patients who are 50 years old? They're not doing drag queen story hours there. They're doing it with young children predominantly, almost exclusively.
And I think we all remember how they got their foot in the door. They wanted nothing to do with anything that they're asking for and pushing now. They said that will never happen. The only thing they want is, why do you care what two responsible adults do in the privacy of their own home?
Right? No. It's gone from, why do you care what two consenting adults do alone, to now we're coming for your children. You're afraid that they're going to see things online. They call it information. Well, technically, anything's information. Porn is information.
Yeah.
Right? So yeah, what are they going to find online? Tactics, methods, toys, gadgets, all sorts of things that could go to any type of sexual debauchery that you want to name. That's what they're talking about is information.
Yeah, it's sad, and I hope you guys recognize that they're defining themselves based on what they do sexually, rather than who they are ontologically as people. There's so many great things with respect to our mind and innovation and things we can build and create and relationships that we can foster for the good. And these things, even between man and woman, would be shameful to be exposing in public view. And they're leading the charge of their campaign with these things.
Right, right. It's absolutely absurd to want to define an entire group based on their behavior, right? I mean, you have trade organizations that do that, but that's more about, you know, how you earn a living. You know, it's a common interest.
It's economy.
Right, that's economic, but the black community and any other community that they want to say is historically marginalized, it's not about their behavior. It's about an immutable characteristic of their humanity.
Yeah.
Right.
This is not that.
No, this is a hundred percent not that. And so keep that in mind as we go to the city council meeting. These counselors are speaking before the public comments. Like I said, we're going to play this in chronological order. We're not playing it all. It's three hours long. But what happened was, they have a rule in their own governance that any proclamation can be shot down by a minority vote. You have to have a two-thirds majority for a proclamation to go through because they don't want controversial issues to be turned into proclamations. And so these are their own rules. We didn't make these up as society. And you'll see it when you see some of the videos in the background. There's about 150 people packing this place at least, and it was about 10 to one against this proclamation. And so in their attitudes and in their disrespect, bear that in mind, the numbers that were there and their own rules. So we're going to start with Congressman Shane Bowman.
Yeah, I'll say something. I think that's a, that's kind of a way to choose not to speak about something is to call it controversial. Last two weeks ago, we did a proclamation to, to recognize law enforcement and police week. And most people in this room would probably support that. If you get on Facebook and you look at the Battleground site and you see a state patrolman sitting at Dick's Tire Factory, not on the sidewalk, but in the parking lot, doing traffic enforcement, you will see that there's many comments about what police officers should be doing. Not supporting our police officers. Controversial, you could say, in nature. Couple of years ago, we had a whole movement on defunding police. Controversial. Depending where you're at, it can be very controversial.
Just to put context, he's arguing against the council following their own rule. Because they already anticipate that there's going to be enough votes in the minority to prevent this proclamation from going through. So he's not really engaging with the issue face on. He's trying to argue against their own rules that he doesn't want to follow.
Yeah, and he's, anybody can find anything controversial. It's kind of his point.
Yeah.
But this is civil. This is politic. So it's the body politic.
Right. And there are things that might be split pretty closely down the middle 50-50 in the public. It's not the mere numbers that make them controversial. It's what is the emotion and the response to this issue, right? Tax policy could be split 50-50 in terms of what people think. You're not getting 150 people showing up to your meeting over that, counselor, right?
And let's remember why this police officer issue is even being considered as controversial. It's by the same platform that's pushing this.
The same totalitarian movement.
Because when I was a kid growing up, it was cops come to school, firemen come to school, public servants come to school. You look up to them, you're taught to respect them. This is completely different. And they're pushing both sides. So they're talking to both sides with their mouth.
Oh, yeah, yeah. No Antifa, the Rainbow Mafia, as I like to call them, and BLM, they're all different wings of the same movement.
Yes.
Right? It's the same totalitarian movement. And what is the anti-cop BLM Antifa wing have in common with the Pride wing? Why don't they like police officers? They're a symbol of right and wrong. They're a symbol of authority over your life.
Yep.
Which is exactly what the Pride people have a problem with. You don't have a right to tell me what's right and what's wrong.
Yeah, I don't want any authority.
No.
So I vote Democrat.
Exactly.
Couple of years ago, we had a whole movement on defunding police. Controversial. Depending where you're at, it can be very controversial. Portland, it was much more controversial than it is here in Battleground, but it's still controversial. When I was mayor, actually when I got on council in 2012, one of the things that we weren't doing was having, at our Christmas celebration, we weren't having prayer. Asked Pastor Stanton if he would offer the prayer. He did. And for the next 12 years, we've done prayer at our Christmas celebration, holiday celebration, whatever you want to call it.
All of these are not proclamations, though.
Exactly.
Except for the first one he went over. The rest are not proclamations. These are category errors. He might as well be telling us, you know, his traditions with his grandma during Christmas.
Right, exactly. The rules for the city council don't say that you can't even legislate on anything controversial. Then it would render your position there moot.
Yep.
And void. No, it's specifically having to do with proclamations. So whether you have somebody pray somewhere else, that's not covered in your bylaws, man. I don't know why you're bringing this up, McFly. You know, no, he, yeah, they're just dodging all over the place. Like you said, category errors.
Calling for compromise.
Yeah.
That's what he's trying to do. He's trying, and that's why he's bringing up prayer, police officer, because he knows, who supports police officers?
Yes.
Who prays?
Yep. He's trying to say, hey, we had your back before. Now you need to let us go. I'm sorry, last I checked, police officers aren't leading a totalitarian movement coming for my kids.
No.
Right?
They're protecting them.
Exactly.
That was controversial, still is today. Every year, we get messages about forcing kids, they say, kids to sit there and listen to prayer. And guess what we did? We continued with prayer. And that's controversial. To some people, it's not. To others, it is. And so it's easy for us to say something's controversial when we don't agree with it. It's hard for us to recognize things that are right in the community and right because we need to do it.
What's the standard of right and wrong?
Not use that as a crutch. And so we can say, almost every proclamation we do can be considered controversial. If you go onto Wikipedia, there's a list of about 50 controversial to some of you, maybe not to others. I think the only one that we can probably agree on is July being ice cream month not being controversial. Okay? And so Black History Month, Indigenous People, Women's Month, January 16th could be controversial to some people. That's Religious Freedom Day. So
Yeah, but you didn't start that.
It's interesting how we get fired up and we'll come into a room. And I told the mayor, the one thing we may agree on tonight is the Pledge of Allegiance. The other stuff we may fight about.
No, there's people in there who don't agree on that.
But at the end of the day, there's a lot of things that are controversial, but this proclamation.
Could you please refrain to one minute?
No, sorry, ma'am, you're out of order. If you speak again.
Counsel isn't held to one minute.
Alright, coming up here is where he
So we're going to be able to speak.
Totally undermines his own argument.
When we say that, that things are controversial, it's concerning to me because there will be, depending on how this goes, we've been, we've had some attorneys tell us proclamation should be done if you do this. I will tell you this, this is the first time I've seen most of you guys in this room. I've been here for 12 years. That's sad.
Okay, so he just destroyed his own argument. Talking about all these other things that they've done, other proclamations that they've done were highly controversial. The room's packed to the brim, and he's saying it's the first time I've seen any of you. So were those things really controversial?
No, they weren't.
No, of course they weren't. And this one is, by their own definition.
Wouldn't, if you're, if you're acting on behalf of the community, for the good of the community, which is what your role is as a civil authority, wouldn't you be thankful that there was a bunch of people coming out, even if they disagreed with you? If you had a bunch of your citizens coming, then maybe you've got your finger on the wrong pulse of the wrong community.
Right, yes. No, if you're not arrogant, if you're not smug, if you're not fully bought into this totalitarian movement. Now, I think there's different kinds of people reflected on this council. Adrian Cortez is definitely a flag-waving adherent to that totalitarian movement.
But it's the same like, when I teach Greek, if I get the answers back, if I get a quiz, I give a quiz to my students, and then I get back, and everybody in the class, maybe except for one, misses a question, gets it wrong. Whose fault is that? That's my fault. I didn't do a good job teaching. And I'm recognizing that by the majority of what's coming at me, the information that's coming at me and go, okay, I need to change something here because I've missed the pulse on this one.
Right.
And it's like that in any area where you have public authority. And this is what he should be noticing. Rather than shaming everybody for showing up tonight because he can't get his way and just push it through, he should be applauding and then reanalyzing his own view.
Right, exactly. Fast forwarding here, he's going to make an interesting statement.
And on how this goes tonight, if this goes 3-4, this will be a minority overruling a majority vote. And every single one of you would say that that's not right.
Yeah.
Baloney. I would not say that that's not right. It's so ironic that he wants to put like a moral shadow over those in the audience who simply want their counselors to vote consistent with their wishes and their own conscience, because that's what he's doing. He's attacking the three members who were going to vote against this proclamation. Three out of seven would, is a minority, but enough to overturn it. And he was going to try to cast the blame for some sort of ethical bridge that you shouldn't cross on those who want the minority to win, when he's the one who wants to go against his own rules. It's his city council's rules that say, that's enough to overturn it. And he wants to disregard that.
And more irony comes when you realize that's put in place, just like a lot of our government checks and balances for protection, so that there's loud minority voices don't overturn the majority of the population.
Exactly.
Which is, last time I checked, a civil realm can't last very long when they're not producing children. And so if the majority of our population is homosexual, we die out really quick. The majority of our population is not homosexual. He's taking a minority position and trying to push it through just because it's a majority on that panel.
Right.
Which is why we have those checks and balances. So the irony has layers to it, just goes deeper and deeper. And it's, it's clear that, that he can't think.
No, he's incapable of thinking because a proclamation, as he's going to explain later, and he actually helps our side, it's solidarity with a segment. And so why do you, why, I understand why the council in years past had this rule, because proclamations are not supposed to be a source of division. There's going to be enough division on actual policy, right? Proclamations are supposed to be a source of unity for a community. And guess what? That's going to look different in Portland and Seattle than it's going to look in Battleground, Washington.
Yep.
And so your council, ideally, hopefully, and typically, is going to be representative of your people. And so if you've got a 4-3 split, this is a pretty divisive issue, you shouldn't be making a proclamation on this. Is that so hard to understand, Counselor Bowman? No. I don't think it's hard to understand, but they're petulant, arrogant, smug children.
Yeah.
And they want to get their way.
They're very, very selfish.
Absolutely. So here's the part where he explains what a proclamation is for. And he's doing this in response to the other counselors who spoke against it. I'm not going to play those portions for time's sake, but we will give this response from
Deputy Mayor Bowman?
So I think part of this is just maybe lack of understanding what a proclamation is for. If we want a proclamation for everybody and everyone needs to get a ribbon to go home, then good, we'll give you one. But proclamations are for organizations. So when we do, when we do National Women's Month, you just lost half the room. You didn't include all of them. When you do Mental Health Awareness Month, when you do Black History Month, when you do all these other things, you lose half the room, or more. And, and so that's just a cop-out to say, well, it doesn't include everybody, because a proclamation isn't going to include everybody. We recognized one person, one person, and made him the ambassador of the City of Battleground. We didn't make all of you that. No one else in this room has a key to the city except for him. But we should have included all of you, apparently. And it's amazing to me how we, we will, we will throw out words like woke and council culture and all this stuff. And it only works if it's not something that I want counseled. It only works if it's, if, if you offend me, then I'll counsel it. And that, that's the thing. I mean, I can go right down this list and show you time and time again where these proclamations do not include everybody. And they shouldn't, because that's not what they're for. But if that's what we're going to go by, is because we all need to be included, then we'll get some ribbons and give everyone some ribbons then, so that everybody can have their, you know, participation badge.
Okay, so I do appreciate the counselors who voted against this. My loving critique would be that their responses weren't well thought out and formulated. I think that they wanted to vote against it in as unprovoking a way as possible. And in doing so, they didn't give a compelling argument. And it left them open to, yeah, well, this, this isn't for, for everybody. Of course, it's not for everybody. But it is, but you know, in her defense, council person, Frer, Fur, I keep forgetting how to pronounce it. I could spell it, but not pronounce it. She was getting to the point that we were getting at, is that it's supposed to be a unifying thing. And I think she just worded it a little choppy, saying it should be for everyone. But no, it should be a unifying thing, even if it's about veterans. Not everybody's a veteran, but most everybody appreciates veterans, right?
So either functionally or verbally.
Right.
Yeah, I'm, just as a side note, I don't agree with Black History Month, or
No.
Women's Month, or anything like that, because I think all of those things are wrong, because the government's supposed to be rewarding actions.
Right, but black people, not as a full group, or not, you know, dressing in G-strings and coming after my children. So I'm not probably going to show up at a council meeting for a Black History Month declaration.
No, there's degrees of it, but don't just reward, hey, congr, you were born black or a woman, or whatever. And I mean, you had no control over that, and we're celebrating that.
Right.
It would be better to be celebrating the accomplishments, rewarding actions. Have a Mother's Month, or something like that, for what people are contributing, not just who they are.
Right, no, exactly. And so what Bowman tacitly did was prove our point, that it is solidarity with the minority, right? Now, sometimes that solidarity is warranted and unifying. Veterans, for example, right? You know, civil rights leaders, pretty unifying. Most people agree with that. So he's saying exactly what our point is, that you are, you are down with the cause, right? And so that means you're down with everything encompassed in that. You're down with the video we played at the beginning.
Yep.
All of that is included in the Pride, okay? It's not just, don't bully us, because if it was just, don't bully. Now, they say that, but they do that after, like the truth's hiding in plain sight. Pride. We're in your face. We're not going away. This isn't acceptance. This is in your face.
And most of the hate crimes that they reference were perpetrated by themselves on themselves for the purpose of publicity, because it's not really, these attacks aren't really happening to the extent that they're claiming they do.
No, not near.
So they can continue to push their agenda through to get to the children for pedophilia.
Absolutely. So Troy McCoy here. Now, forgive me, this isn't 100% chronological. Everything that I played from Shane Bowman is, but this is actually going back just a bit, because I want to do the council members, you know, one at a time. So this is Mayor Troy McCoy speaking.
So I'll use my first time through. I'll just give you what my rules are for accepting a proclamation that comes to the city. Three rules. It's requested. The person will be here to accept it, and it's a nationally recognized day, week, or month. Those are the three rules. As far as controversial, I believe that's problematic in our, in our laws, or in our governor's manual. There's a lot of things that have been controversial in this country. I don't need to tell any of you what some of those are. If you look to your right and left, you're seeing somebody at some point, if they weren't a white male landowner, they were controversial. It was controversial for women to vote. It was controversial for blacks to ride in the wrong part of the bus. You're on the wrong side of this.
Okay, so he's making equivalence between non-whites' experience in the past and landowners, and, you know, and those diversifications with being a homosexual.
Yeah, and I don't think he's very well-educated on history. Have you guys heard of the Suffrage Movement? What is the Suffrage Movement? And if you thought it was women's right to vote, you're wrong. That was the Suffragette Movement. The Suffrage Movement was allowing men to vote, because not every male had the right to vote. What he's doing, you can see his worldview coming out. It's critical race theory.
A hundred percent.
He's infected with that disease. And he gave us his, his three things to run his grid by. Requested, the person that requested is present, and it's nationally recognized. So all he's doing is, he's not checking, he has, what's he checking this against to see if this is actually good or evil?
Nothing.
If this is Nazi Germany.
Yeah.
And it's nationally requested against Jews.
Yep.
He's going to push it right through.
By his, by his own rules, yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah. No, and Troy McCoy is a coward. He is a professional politician who is just there to occupy a seat and gain stature for himself. And he will follow the path of least resistance. I know this from personal experience. He was on the school board and didn't do much in the teacher's strike. He played friendly with me when I was leading the protests against the teachers, because it took some pressure off of him, and that's about it. And so he was friendly at that time. But during all the COVID madness, when, you know, employers in the Battleground area were firing people for not getting the jab, and he was contacted by me and others requesting that he stand up and do something and, and declare that this won't happen in Battleground, what did he do? He goes straight to, well, we'll get sued. That's not leadership. That's not courage.
No.
I'm sure it came at great personal risk to stand up to the Nazi regime as they were arresting Jews, and their pogroms were going on.
It did. You got thrown in the concentration camp with them.
Yeah.
Troy Ten Boom.
Yeah, yeah, no. And we all know that that's evil. I'm sorry, people were getting forced to get an experimental jab at risk of losing their livelihood, and you're like, my attorney says no. Troy McCoy is a coward and has no business in civil government. In fact, he may disgust me the most of those three up there.
He has no concern for the welfare of the citizens over which he's supposed to look out.
No, zero concern whatsoever. If it's any risk to his neck at all, he will not. Now, see, these, these people are cowards. Other than Adrian Cortez, he's a card-carrying Marxist, in my opinion. So maybe he's not a coward, but he is a totalitarian. The other two are cowards, and why are they cowards? People say, well, they're standing up to a whole room for People say, well, they're standing up to a whole room full of people, because guess what? Two big sins, cowardice, pride. And when those two collide, one of them's going to win out. And often it's pride. So they arrived at this position because of cowardice. But at that point, now their pride's on the line. When they're faced with the, with the group of people in front of them and the sin of their pride won out in that moment. But they arrived at that position through cowardice.
And underlying that is self-preservation.
Yes.
Self-preservation is a powerful motivator. That's why not many people stood up to the Nazis in Germany.
Nope.
Self-preservation. That's why not many people stood up when the COVID thing was going around here and all, all the lockdowns and everything were happening. Self-preservation. I don't want to rock the boat. I, I don't want to be singled out.
No, and, and don't get me wrong. Um, in 20 years, if um, the Lord doesn't grant success to the movement backing his truth and this Rainbow Mafia gains control, make no mistake, they're going to be no more kind, loving, peaceful, tolerant, all of the buzzwords that they use against their opponents than the Nazis were. They will not. No. And that room will be less than half as full as it was.
Yeah.
Right. You and I will be the only ones left, probably, because people are cowards. Even people on our side are cowards.
Yeah.
Yes. And self-preservation wins the day.
Yes.
Yeah. All right, so.
Cause life is all they have.
Here's the card carrying Marxist on the group. So he actually believes this stuff. Uh, now hi- his, his worldview is evil, but he may not be a coward. We'll see.
Mr. Cortez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, well, first of all, I thought everybody was come here to, to talk about water, sewer, and fixing our streets, but I guess.
I'm gonna stop it right there, because this just ticks me off to no end. Their job is to fix those things. I shouldn't have to show up at a meeting for you to give me clean water, sewer service, and fix our streets, right? So stop with the condescending, uh, you don't show up for the mundane stuff. We shouldn't have to show up for the mundane stuff.
We have elected officials.
Yes, you're doing that job for us, dude, right? No, we're only showing up when it is controversial, when you're not doing your job.
Exactly.
Right?
Uh, but we'd love to have you here. We want to talk about water, sewer, and fixing our streets.
Therefore, if you want to stand up to us when we're not doing our job, we don't want to have you here. But if you want to stand here while we're doing all the easy stuff, but boring stuff, we'd love to have you. This is a totalitarian. This is a totalitarian.
And you can see even from, from the beginning, he, he's starting to belittle people.
Mm-hmm.
He's starting, he's a bully.
Yeah, he's a hundred percent a bully. In the name of a proclamation that's anti-bullying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I really don't have a lot more to say than what you and Deputy Mayor Bowman said. You said it so eloquently. And I fully support your position. Uh, quite frankly, when I was mayor, when I was in that seat, we did the same proclamation and none of you were here. I'd like to know if anybody here on council has organized a lot of you to come here tonight. And my suspicions would be, if I did a public records request, that I would find out that people on council organized.
All right, I'm gonna stop there. Uh, two things. Number one, shaming us for not being there as if that invalidates it. And it's, it's, it doesn't follow that because you weren't there three years ago, that your voice today doesn't count. That does not follow. That's not logical. That's not even right.
No, that's not.
No.
Just because we got away with something before, doesn't mean we should be away, be able to get away with it now.
Right, because nothing's changed in the Rainbow Movement in the last handful of years, right? It's, hasn't progressed at all.
Yeah, it's all just about.
It's all been static.
consenting adults in the privacy of their own home.
Right, yeah, exactly. That's why.
And a public proclamation celebration.
Yes, and uh, I love how he's calling out other counselors, um, assuming that they organized something when it's clear that they do the same thing. Like, I don't even begrudge them. Uh, and I don't even know that a counselor's organized anything. I have no uh, knowledge to that, but.
Who cares if they did?
Well, that's what I'm saying. I don't care, because they're doing the same thing and I know this. How do I know this? Because emails from people at our church even got out immediately. And I know that a public records request, if you request of the city, takes up to five days. Dude, this was the day bef- after.
Yeah.
A day after they had copies of these emails. Okay, Counselor uh, Cortez, nobody tipped them off. Nobody tipped them off. Now it's on the Battleground Community Cage, page, because they all just found it on their own. But you're gonna cast aspersions on other members in the minority group, because they may have gotten a few phone calls out there. Oh, okay.
And heaven forbid.
Hypocrisy.
That a representative of the people informed the people and invite the people and
Right.
for what the people want.
Exactly, exactly. And they, they did this to um, Cherish Derosher, uh, the, 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 uh, one female that was in the majority, uh, and him, he just talked about that. I bet if we get a public records request and we'll see what she says later. They're kind of dangling this over people's heads. That if you're going to be on the wrong side of this, we're going to shame you. And we're going to prove we're not a totalitarian movement by uh, posting all this on the uh, city website. Because of course, there's no coordination between the city council and the people who posted this a day later, right? Yeah, no, no coordination whatsoever. No, we're not a totalitarian movement. And how dare you guys organize?
This is tolerance. This is fair. This is accepting. This is love.
Uh, the hypocrisy is palpable. Here we go.
You know, let's be frank, ladies and gentlemen, the only thing divisive about this proclamation are the people pushing to kill it. They are the ones that are truly offended.
Yeah, yeah, true.
Hold on a second.
Yeah.
If you, if you think about what the role of government is in promoting good as defined by God, who's being divisive? This, this is just like saying, the only person that's being divisive in the garden is God.
Yeah.
Cause there was a majority vote, three against one.
Yeah.
The serpent, the woman, and the man. And so who's being divisive here?
Right, right. Well, no, scripture warns uh, people against those who cause division.
Yes.
And how does it categorize people who cause division?
Sin.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
They're the ones who cause division. Just to give you a, the proper worldview as ordained by our creator, their Councilman Cortez. We shall continue.
You are offended by recognizing historically marginalized groups of our citizens in this community. I suggest you seek therapy.
Hold on. Order, order. I'll do this one more time. Order, order, order. One more time. Stop, stop, ma'am. This is your last warning. Okay?
Look at the smug look on his face.
Cheers.
All right. He loves it.
So, Mr. Mayor, I would like to state my personal opinion. I value diversity of our community. I support the LGBTQ rights at the local, the national, and the global level. I recognize the importance of policies that protect against discrimination and promote inclusion. We hear you. We see you. I welcome you. Thank you very much.
Okay, uh, this is illogical, self-refuting, and hypocritical. Uh, we support diversity. The very breath before that. Uh, the only ones who are being divisive are those opposing this proclamation. You clearly don't like diversity of thought.
No.
So what's this diversity that you, you say you champion? See, they cloak it in this language. You want zero diversity of thought. You're a totalitarian.
And he's, I want to protect against discrimination, all the while he's up there discriminating.
Yes, yes. Anti, I protect against discrimination by discriminating. I protect diversity by wanting zero diversity. See, our side is not hypocritical, because we don't base it in diversity. We don't base it in anything like they based on. We base it on truth.
The therapy, it, it, the therapy thing, this, this is bullying. I think it's interesting. I was looking at the RCW for Washington and in thirty-five dot eighteen dot one fifty, when it talks about council eligibility, it says only a qualified elector of the city or town may be a member of the council. And upon ceasing to be such or upon being convicted of a crime involving moral turpitude or violating the provisions of another part of RCW. Moral turpitude is, is an act or behavior that gravely violates the sentiment or accepted standard of the community. Or it could be something base vile, depraved conduct that shocks the public conscience. And when you look up on what crimes are listed under there, one of them is bullying. And when you look up under bullying, it's exactly what Adrian Cortez is doing.
Yeah, oh yeah, absolutely.
If anybody out there is a lawyer, I mean, even bringing a, a civil case would be a good start against Adrian Cortez for the crime of moral turpitude.
Yeah, no, if, uh, if you want to argue, here's the thing, like, position matters. If, if a boss and an employee are talking, one of them can be more pointed than the other without being out of lounge.
Yeah.
If you're at a city council meeting, I'm sorry, you are the servant. You are working for the people. I'm not uh, condoning anybody being disrespectful uh, from the public comments section. However, you are held, you are held to a higher standard. You are not to demean, degrade, and mock. You should have seen the smug look on his face when he got, when he got a reaction out of the people, because he gravely insulted them. And said, you need therapy. And yeah, there was a lady there who, who couldn't take it. And he's just like, I love it, I love it. Yeah, yeah, he's a tyrant.
Yeah.
He's a tyrant. Um, and now we'll get into uh, the exact argumentation that the Rainbow Mafia has been using uh, for decades, which um, is they establish a rule that if followed to its logical conclusion, leads to things that everyone would agree are wrong, right? If you're born that way, therefore you can do whatever you want is true, that logically extends to the pedophile.
And the murderer.
Right.
And the rapist.
Yes, right. And then, so he does the same thing here. Recognizing historically marginalized groups, right? If you're against that, then you need to seek therapy. Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, when I hired babysitters, when I, my children were younger, I uh, discriminated against uh, sex offenders. And they are historically marginalized.
Yeah, murderers, bind, torture, kill. I mean, all of these people are minority marginalized people. Some of them are executed, some of them are imprisoned.
Yes. If I wear my Trump Wanted for President shirt over in Portland, I can expect to be marginalized.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna get looks. And like, listen, that's just part of living on planet Earth. Not everybody's gonna like you. How about you grow some skin, right?
When, when we went to California to visit some family, I, we were walking down the street, my wife, nine, or three kids. And we were getting looks of disgust with, from like, old ladies and other people pushing their dogs in strollers.
Mm-hmm.
Like, we were so weird. And it's, I'm being marginalized. And am I, am I gonna go try and use the law against those people?
No.
No.
No. But their side wants to use the law. Their side wants to use the law. And we'll see that uh, when another woman is talking about how far they want to take the law. It's not just punishing actions.
No, it's not, it's not about.
It's even my emotions dictate.
Yeah.
How you're gonna behave.
It's not about accepting.
Right.
It's about conforming control.
Conform and control. And that's what the signaling that you got here. So uh, what did he say? He closed, Mr. Cortez did, by saying, we see you, we hear you, we welcome you. That's pretty much confirming what your pride declaration was at, about from the beginning. You part of this militant movement. We see you there, even though this community doesn't welcome you here because of the trajectory of this movement, because of everything you're doing in schools, because of everything you're doing to little kids. Uh, but we see you, we hear you, meaning I agree with you, everything that you're doing, the video we played at the beginning. I agree with you. And I welcome you. I am planting this flag in the city of Battleground through this pride declaration, saying that this is territory taken by this totalitarian movement.
Yep.
That's exactly what he's doing. He's making that proclamation. And I'm tired of people pretending like that's not what's happening.
Yeah, it's more, it's more than just with him, more than just a virtue signal.
No, no, he believes it. He a hundred percent believes it. The other two are cowards. Um, and they'll go along with whatever butters their bread. Um, you know, like all the villains in every movie, Benedict Arnold and um, the turncoats, you know, I think of Braveheart when uh, Robert the Bruce betrayed Braveheart and, you know, felt remorse after. Yeah, it's self-preservation. They're exactly like that. They're like uh, Robert the Bruce's dad, that real gnarly looking dude. Yeah, yeah. He would do whatever. We must keep our line.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what Troy McCoy is, is that, that gnarly looking dude from Braveheart.
Uh, which is what most of the people on the Sanhedrin did too. Because in John twelve, he says, if Jesus keeps going on like this, he's gonna take away our place and our position.
Yep, yeah, no. And the, and so if, if you know their motives, there you go. Adrian Cortez is the card carrying Marxist. The other two are the useful idiots, the cowards, that they can, you can count on to go along.
Yep.
So here we have uh, Cherish Derosher. She's the fourth member who voted for the counselor. She was the most respectful, but there's still problems with her comments, of course, and a little bit of Troy McCoy.
This being controversial, I will say that this is the first time I have ever received so much hate-filled emails. I honestly could not believe the hatred that I heard in the, read in the emails for our fellow man and not just loving people for who they are and allowing them to exist in our world. So I just want to say to everybody in marginalized communities that I see you, I hear you, you are welcome. Everyone's welcome, but I especially want you to know that. Um, but uh, it was really hard reading all those emails. I, I'm sure they'll be out with a public records request, so you'll get to see what, what we read and how much hate was in those emails. Thank you.
That's two different counselors who've uh, mentioned public records requests, almost like they were uh, you know, prepping the ground for the release that they had already facilitated. Um, and to tip people off to get that public records request. But here they go again. This is this totalitarian movement in a nutshell. This is where you see it. They equate somebody disagreeing and saying things that they deem as mean as not being a right to exist.
Yeah, you're not allowing them to exist.
Yeah.
So if we look at this logically, what we've noticed is they don't have any logical arguments.
No.
They're bouncing all over the place. They're committing category error after category error after category error. And the, the best arguments that they've had, the strongest ones they've had, have been logical fallacies such as ad hominem, just attack people.
Yes.
I, I can't attack the argument. I, I have no ground for which I can make a good defense.
It's hate.
So I'm gonna attack you.
It's hate. She was almost in tears. She couldn't believe what she was reading.
And I, I, I can't believe people actually believe this, that, that you're against allowing people to exist? Like, this proclamation gives life to these people than, that they don't otherwise have without it?
If you're a totalitarian and you judge progress by bringing people to heal.
Yeah.
And they can't even so much as give you a cross look, then yes, then you do believe you equate that with life.
Yep.
Yeah, no, and it's totalitarianism. You see her, in her own words, the inability to exist. Because you got an email that you disagreed with? That doesn't, that's not allowing anybody to exist? No, that's, that's utterly ridiculous. And she did virtue signal, I want to call out, the, we see you, we hear you, we welcome you. So sig heil.
Yeah.
Sig heil.
Exactly. And I, I hope all of you guys see what's really going on here. What's underlying this is worship.
Yes.
They don't want you to worship the Lord Jesus Christ. They want you to worship them and their movement. It's, it's about having all of your heart, all of your soul, all of your body, all of your possessions, all of your everything, bow down in worship to them.
Yes, they have everything that a religious movement does. They have undeniable doctrines. And if you go against that, it's heresy.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And they have liturgy, right?
Yep.
That year to follow. Every June's Pride Month, just like we have the Lord's Supper, right? Um, no, so they have.
They have doxologies.
Yep, absolutely.
We hear you, we see you, we welcome you.
Yes, yeah, they have catechisms.
Yep.
Yeah.
They had, it's, it is a religion.
It's a hundred percent a religion, a hundred percent a religion.
Yep.
Yeah, and that's what they don't get. So we, we'll get the uh, joy of hearing Troy McCoy, Chief Coward, uh, on the council again, as soon as uh, Derosher's here is done.
And I'll uh, I'll just sum it up. I, I think that's a really good point, Councilman Derosher. You know, I was kind of on the fence on whether we, a proclamation was warranted, you know, uh, because I was hearing a lot of, a, a lot of issues. And then as I got more and more vitriol and filled emails, I'm like, wow, if this group isn't marginalized and discriminated against, I've not seen a group that is more discriminated against than this group based on those emails. I mean, it is shockingly, I mean, and most of them quoted scripture. I, I was shocked to my core, absolutely shocked. But here we are. So we're fighting over words. We're fighting over making somebody feel safe. So we're fighting over words. We're fighting over making somebody feel safe. And that's what we're gonna vote on. Because this says nothing. If you look at that last sentence, it's I, Troy McCoy. And if this, if this proclamation gets voted down, this will be the last proclamation till we get another one presented to us in June, if we do. But I can't see how a protected class gets voted down and then we let other protected classes come in. I as, as a as a fiduciary responsibility to the city, this will be our last proclamation as I'm mayor.
This guy is a moron. This guy is, uh, a coward and he's petulant. Since you didn't pass my proclamation, well, we're not gonna do another proclamation until next June.
It's a temper tantrum.
When they do another one. I've never seen a more discriminated against, uh, group. How could, if we can't pass a protected class, they're a protected class by law, meaning you can't discriminate against them in employment, housing, and things like that. A proclamation is not those things. A proclamation is standing in unity with everything that a movement stands for. Being a Christian and having a religious point of view is also a protected class. Are you gonna say that the, you can make a proclamation that the Christian worldview is the only one? I, you're not gonna do that. That would be the closest thing to what you're doing here.
We should put one forward and then see how they respond to that.
Well, he's already said what he's gonna respond to. And that's, yeah, I'm not gonna do another proclamation until next June.
But he already said that, that he, he's, he's upset about discrimination and marginalization. And again, when, when we hear these buzzwords, he, the one thing he said that was right was this is a fight over words.
Yes.
That was, he's, yes. But the other things, discriminated for what? Discrimination is not wrong.
Nope.
That you won't let anybody into your house, you'll discriminate. And businesses used to have on their front, we refuse the right to, uh, uh, to, uh, we reserve the right to refuse service to anyone.
Having discriminating taste used to be a compliment.
Yeah. That you don't have shoes, sorry, you can't come into our restaurant.
Yep.
That's discrimination.
Yep.
Discrimination in and of itself is not wrong. The reason why one is discriminating and according to what standard one is discriminating will let you know whether it's right or wrong. Same with marginalizing.
Yeah.
You're not going to, we, we don't allow convicted sex offenders to serve in children's ministry.
No. Nor will we, ever.
Yeah. That's not something we're going to do.
Yeah.
And another thing that he said was, this is about feeling safe. There's times I don't feel safe.
Right.
There, there's times all of us don't feel safe, but we can't run around passing laws and making proclamations based on individuals' feelings.
I'll tell you when I didn't feel safe is when the, uh, Antifa card carrying Nazi, but side note, you know how to spot a Nazi? They have a Nazi sign with a line through it, the no Nazi.
Anti fascist.
If you see the anti fascist, you, mark my words, there's a fascist.
Yep.
Right? So anyway, when I didn't feel safe is when he snapping pictures of everybody in there. I know exactly why he's doing that. And I even told him when I left, I know why you're doing that. You're trying to intimidate. That's what totalitarians do.
Yep.
They will dox you. They will spread your picture to everyone. I told him, I'm not hiding. And I'm not hiding. No, because that's the only way you can stand up to a totalitarian.
It's all about tolerance, fairness, love, and acceptance.
Yeah, exactly. No, it's wrong to marginalize a group unless it's what we want to marginalize.
Yep.
Right? See, everybody marginalizes, everybody discriminates, everybody looks side-eyed at certain people. The question is by what standard?
Yes.
By what standard? They want it to be their own.
Because all the things that he was saying that he's, uh, against, he was for.
Yes. Yes. He's wanting to marginalize a hundred and twenty-five people in there.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. Just change the object and then he's all of a sudden for it.
Yep. Now, it's totally inconsistent. And if you have even a pea brain, uh, you can, you can spot it. All right. So here's gonna be, um, a picture of the other side that we had, um, speaking here.
And one of the things too is Roundup makes people, what it does, it, it affects your hormones and causes endocrine interruptors.
Oh.
And Roundup causes people to be trans. So if you're not eating organic food and we don't get Roundup banned statewide or nationally.
Five seconds.
I will put this stuff on public record. They're now making Roundup, uh, they're making different kinds of, uh,
I'm sure that's why Roundup is in business.
That lady was on her own side. No, I think both sides, when she got up, were like, what's this lady talking about? That was funny though. Uh, so I, I, yeah, I went to the wrong clip, but I'm glad I did. Cause yeah, I had that earmarked with Roundup makes people trans. Right? Um, all right. So th- this next lady that we're gonna play, this is important. She is on a mission and that mission is to win the intersectionality Olympics as the most oppressed people group, um, or convergence of different ethnic, uh, people groups uh, in existence. Her name is Jasmine Violet and I had a pleasant, uh, Facebook interaction with her on the Battleground Community page as well.
Um, hi, I'm Jasmine. My last name is Violet. Um, I was here to encourage you to go forth with the proclamation. I'm kind of gonna skip forward through what I had written down. There was a comment by a council member that was made that this proclamation causes division amongst marginalized communities. And I stand here as a black and Latino woman within our community to tell you that that's not true. We collectively, as marginalized communities, know that we fight together, we work together, we live together. Because outside of our communities, others don't understand our oppression. They don't understand what we have to go through, what we have to face, especially walking down the streets of Battleground, where I and my children have constantly been racially accosted by people who drive off with their Jesus fish stickers on their car. And I would encourage you to next year, not use our oppression to further your own agendas. Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, you win, you are the most oppressed person. Um, you got nothing on the Jews, uh, you, in Poland, uh, as the Nazi regime was marching through there. You got nothing on them. Uh, I'm sure that your existence is, uh, you know, borderline tolerable. And that, that's why you feel so open to speak publicly about it.
Yeah. It, the whole thing, I, I hope you hear the critical race theology going on in everything that she said. And, yeah, cause the intersectionality in there.
Yep.
All of her, all of her points of privilege that she has and all of her victimhood aspects coming together. And all of it was anecdotal.
Yeah.
She could, she could say, uh, aliens came down from space and were persecuting me even. That's how bad this got.
Well, and she preemptively, uh, not to interrupt you, but it's important, she preemptively, uh, goes against, anybody would argue against that by saying, uh, you haven't lived through it. You haven't experienced it. Therefore, you have no, no right to comment.
That's where the critical theory comes in.
Right.
Because the person that's lived the experience is the most qualified person to talk about it. Not the person that, that has the clearest logic and is the most knowledgeable on the subject.
Right.
But the person that's experienced the most.
Right.
It's all anecdotal.
Right. Cause I've never been looked at, uh, across, ever.
Never.
Everybody's loved me my entire life.
And all the people with, with pride flags and pride stickers, when you go out to talk with them, I've always been kind to you. When you got to talk with them about the gospel.
Yes, when we evangelize at Estor Short Park, I can't tell you how loving, tolerant, well, wait, let me go through all the buzzwords from that video at the beginning. How, yes, tolerant, fair, accepting, caring, and loving, uh, that they were towards us as we're sharing the gospel with them.
Yeah. You know, interestingly, there are two groups of people that are the most hostile to us when we do evangelism. One of them
Yes.
is the alphabet mafia.
Yep.
The other is professing Christians.
Both religious.
Yes.
It's religious folks.
Always the religious folks, just like the ones that killed Jesus.
Yep. A hundred percent, a hundred percent. So, and so her totalitarianism is seen though. Notice how, number one, I don't believe her. Nobody in Battleground's looking at you cross. Stop that nonsense. Secondly, though, even if, even if, notice how she thinks that this is an injustice to be corrected through a legal process, through the city council, through legal means. That's totalitarianism.
Yeah.
You want to have the right to walk down the street without somebody looking at you cross? That's asinine. That's insanity. The only place where that is true is of dictators in their own countries.
Yep. North Korea.
Yes. Yeah. Kim Jong-un can walk down the street without getting a cross look. He's the only guy in that country who can say that. Or maybe some of his higher ups as well.
Yeah.
But, um, even the higher ups can get a cross look from Kim Jong-un. Only one of them can a hundred percent get no cross look.
Yep.
Right? No, it's a totalitarian impulse. And that is what you're seeing in this group. And that's what we want you, you to understand. It's religious in nature. It's totalitarian. It is uncompromising. Now, our beliefs are uncompromising. The difference is, is we trust God to implement justice. It's not our job to change their hearts. It's only our job to speak the truth.
Correct.
Right? They are judge, jury, and executioner.
Yes.
Yes. All right. So here's the next.
Stealing from God to enact all of those things, cause all of those belong to God.
A hundred percent. Uh, this next guy is an absolute joy. Um, it's hard to get to the exact second on the timestamp because it's such a long video that even moving the cursor a millimeter goes like five seconds, 10 seconds. But, uh, after this one guy finishes up, we're gonna have our favorite dude, David. Such a nice guy. It, just hearing him and, and watching him, you know you'd love to have him as a neighbor.
Real quick, before I get started, what's the council's, uh, feelings about profanity?
Let's try to limit it.
Whoa, 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 what are we doing? You already started running. It was a question before I got started. Can we restart, please?
Go ahead, sir.
Can we not restart?
Go ahead.
Well, awesome. Great. Cool. Okay. So, uh, initially I was gonna come up here and I wanted to talk about how as a parent with kids in battleground schools, how important it is for them to be seen and felt and included. Uh, also about that we, uh, we have taken in a foster child, a queer, trans child whose mother attempted to unalive them. Uh, basically, you know, all this stuff that you guys are saying, right? You say that, uh, oh, God says, you know, man who lays with man should be dead, right? These are death threats. These, these have actual real things on the community. And I'm looking at some of you because some of you know me and I know some of you, right? And I see the shit in your Telegram chats, right? We see your flagrant profanity. We see your flagrant use of hate speech. Um, so just coming from the faggot who drinks Roundup straight out of the bottle, I'd just like to let you know, if you're not going to let us have pride, we will give you wrath.
Hmm. Okay. So, uh, such a pleasant gentleman. Um, so let me go through the buzzwords. Loving, tolerant, fair, accepting, and caring. He, he's really, uh, epitomizing all those virtues that they say they stand for. Um, so people reading scripture to him, he says he interprets as a death threat. Even though if you have even a one-on-one level, uh, knowledge of Christianity, you know, it's not a death threat. If God says you deserve death, that's a hundred percent true. We're not the adminis- ministers of that justice. That's not our job. In fact, we're not to do that.
That's why he, he thinks that we are though, is because that's what he wants to do.
Well, he wants to use that to justify his reaction. He knows better than that. He's not scared in the slightest of anyone in that room on the other side.
You could tell.
You can tell.
Yes.
He's not scared at all. If he actually thought that those were threats against his life and he was outnumbered 10 to one, which he was, he's not gonna get up there and make a threat back.
Yeah.
Right? No.
No.
He, no. His, his own posture, uh, belies that he doesn't believe that.
He wouldn't act that way in North Korea.
No, he would not act that way in North Korea. Right?
Or, or in Gaza.
He will threaten you. And this is exactly what he means. I interpret that as a death threat. And if you won't let me live with pride, I will bring you wrath. That's as close as a direct death threat is saying, I will kill you. Because he was building on one idea onto another. He was saying, yours is a death threat. I'm gonna bring you wrath. So how should we interpret that?
So the wages of sin is death.
Right.
And it doesn't matter what your sin is. And it doesn't matter, um, if it's only one sin, which it's not.
Yeah.
And, and so he, he, he's taking that. And when we're saying that, that's truth from scripture. It's like, when you drive your car off a nine million foot cliff and crash to the ground, you will die.
Yes.
That's not a death threat. Yeah. That's not a death threat.
Right.
That's a fact.
Yes.
But what he's saying is, I'm going to take the law into my own hands. And I'm going to distribute wrath, which is reserved for God alone. We're not saying we're gonna come out and give you wrath.
Mm-hmm.
We're trying to lovingly show you, this is what's at the end of that road when it drops off.
Right.
The other thing, he wants his, his, he said he's a parent, wants his kids to be seen, felt, included.
Yep.
Like.
I was gonna comment on that. Yep.
Almost every parent wants that to a certain degree for their kids. But that, that's, that's your job as a parent to shepherd them through that.
Mm-hmm.
And notice, it was interesting when he brought up being a foster parent, how he negatively lighted how the mother of that tried to unalive them.
Yes.
So I take it, David, that you are against abortion.
Of course he is. He's logically consistent, I'm sure.
He must be.
Yes. Yes. Well, he's probably pro-abortion, which is why he doesn't like to say kill. Um, but, uh, no, but you need to see the totalitarianism hidden in plain sight in their statements. He not talking about his son as a human being, not as a creature created in God's image, but specifically his son as a transgender LGBTQ plus whatever member. It's in that context that he says he should be seen, felt, right? And heard. Okay. What does that mean? Seen doesn't just mean, okay, my eyeballs see you. What that means is you have a favored status.
Yes.
That's what seen, who's gets seen? Royalty.
Mm-hmm.
Those parading, right? Those at the central, uh, uh, portion of any society are the ones seen, right? That's what he's saying. We are totalitarians. We have a central part in this culture and you will celebrate everything we have to do.
Yep.
And everything we stand for. To be heard, meaning I have a position of authority. Right? This is totalitarianism, people. And they're telling it to you in plain language. If you just listen.
Rights.
Nobody has that right.
Those things are earned.
Yes. Those things are earned. And you don't have a right to demand it of anybody. Right? No. So, and, and if you don't let me march with pride, what that means is if you don't let me be seen to the degree I want to be seen, you don't let me be heard to the degree I want to be heard, what does he promise you? Wrath. That is a totalitarian. And I can tell you what, that guy a hundred percent moonlights at Antifa rallies on Saturdays and Sundays, throwing Molotov cocktails at buildings. It's not, uh, too hard to recognize that.
No.
No.
What we want for Unmasked Podcast is to be seen, felt, and included, which means we'll have 10 million views on this episode. And if we don't have 10 million views, then you will feel our wrath.
It's because you're hateful, spiteful, and intolerant. Because you didn't like, share, and subscribe to this episode.
Yeah.
Right? Um, so.
Time to grow up.
The last, uh, portion that we have here is my comments. Um, you know, you know, guess what? It's a pretty good, uh, clip. So we'll, we'll go there and.
Guess what? You're gonna like this.
Obviously, I was originally gonna speak against this proclamation and there's no need to do that, but I will discuss it briefly. Uh, I want to thank the people behind us for illustrating so clearly that this is not about rights. This is not about respect. This is not about anti-bullying. It's about a totalitarian movement. Only one person in this room is utter threats. The other person is unwilling to even talk to people. I'll talk to anybody outside. Now, what's more concerning, now that the proclamation is shot down, is the behavior of you three in the middle. You wanna degrade us? Tell us to seek therapy? Yeah, good. Yeah. Well, guess what? You wanna say that our opinion doesn't matter because we weren't here for other past things? Fine. Guess what? We voted every election. But guess what? We're not asleep any longer. Now we're awake. Okay? Now we're gonna watch every move you make. Okay? So you can continue to be cowards. I know why you voted the way you did. Cause these people scare you. No, it's true. You're cowards. But do the right thing, repent. You have no authority other than what's given to you by Jesus Christ. That's what he said to Pontius Pilate in John 19:11. All right. So, uh, I had to ad lib, uh, that because I had a three-minute, uh, talk prepared in opposition to the proclamation, but then the proclamation got shot down. Uh, obviously I didn't foresee their arrogance, their smugness, their disrespect. And so, yeah, like you said, I pulled an audible. So, um, and I was surprised at how quickly I went through. Number one, I got all my points out in like 30 seconds instead of 60 seconds. And then Adrian Cortez, you, if you can see it in the video, depending on which video clip we put up, he's nodding in agreement, oh yeah, you need therapy. You know, arrogant dude that he is. Yeah, yeah. So, uh, all those things led me to, um, stumble a little bit in the latter half of that. But point was across and it, like you said, it's, it, I came at it from an angle that, uh, nobody else was even, uh, touching on.
Yeah. No, there, there was a handful of people there that, that had good statements to make. Um, yours was the most impassioned. And yours stood out because it, it was different and addressed the folly of the individuals. And I really think that's, that's one of the things the church needs to be doing right now. We've lost our so-called quote-unquote prophetic voice.
Mm-hmm.
The vo- the, the responsibility that we have of calling out civil leaders for their sin.
Right.
Be- because it's not like it goes unnoticed by God that, that there's civil sin going on. I mean, he's even sent Jonah to call the. I mean, he's even sent Jonah to call the innovates to repentance. And he sent all, almost all, the prophets to go to either their leader or a leader of a neighboring country or another country. To call them to repentance for the wickedness of their sins, because every, every, every nation. Is under God. That, we've talked about this before, there is no authority unless it's delegated from God. And so there is a natural law that God's written on men's hearts. That's why we know rape is bad, murder is bad, pedophilia is bad. Homosexuality is bad, and there's a lot that we share in our natural law as humans with, that we, that we see in the animal kingdom. For example, but it goes beyond that because we're created in God's image, and he gives his law upon our heart. And so obviously, yours was my favorite. You were the only person that made somebody get up crying.
The lady behind me in the video got up because she was the one who wouldn't talk to somebody. We didn't show that clip, but a lady talked. And tried to just say something nice to her, and she covered her ears and was like, ah, don't talk to me. Oh, and that Jasmine lady, before I forget, that we covered, during the break, there was a group of people saying the Lord's Prayer. This is during break, not during the meeting. They took a five-minute break, and she just started screaming and yelling. Like a screeching hen, you know, and of course, you know, coward Mayor McCoy got up and chastised everybody. For acting like, you know, second graders.
For praying.
Yeah, cuz one group was praying and the other one was screaming at the top of their lungs. Of course, those are equal.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Absolutely.
Anyway, but. So yeah, they, you sought from their, from their actions that, why they're there, and so that was my point, is that it illustrates that this is a totalitarian movement. We need to stop pretending like it isn't. We need to stop cloaking our arguments in, in things that don't matter. As if, well, we love and, and care for everybody, and we are for tolerance and acceptance. Yeah, yeah, blah, 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 blah. Like, I'm for being kind and loving to everybody. That's what my Savior and my Lord teaches.
Yeah.
Sometimes love and kindness means speaking a uncomfortable truth.
Right? Woe to you.
Yes.
Scribes and Pharisees.
Right.
Because what you're doing is, is wrong according to God's law, and it's not loving, even though it might be done with a gentle or tender disposition.
Right.
You can very quietly and gently and tenderly give somebody a spoonful of arsenic. Doesn't mean that's love.
Nope.
Just because you're going about it softly and you're being nice. So I think it'd be helpful for us to recap, and then maybe you can watch it again and run through this. What, what is the role of government? How is law supposed to work? Not, not in all detail. Lord willing, we'll get into that in a few months at church, but. Governments are instituted by God for the good of man. That's what we find out in Romans 13:4. It, the state, the government is a minister, a deacon of God to you for good. And then when we talk about good, we have to ask the question, by what standard? And it's God's standard. It's not my feelings. It's not me being seen and me being included. It's about the objective truth that God has already laid down that's in conformance with who he is.
Yeah.
There is good, and anything that is opposed to that is evil.
Right.
If you think about James 4:12, there's one law giver. And you go, wait a second, how can that be? Because there's all kinds of different laws, and, and there's different law givers and legislative bodies over time, and there's different countries, different forms of government. It's because all authority is delegated authority that comes from God on a human level, which means it's also limited.
Yes.
You, you don't have authority to go outside of that. Even, even I as a parent don't have authority to go outside. I can't tell my kids. I don't have the authority to tell my children, I need you to go steal some candy or steal some eggs. Or steal some bread, because we're hungry. I don't have that kind of authority.
Right, no, and people get confused when they compare the, the civil government, like with the family, for example. Everyone, mostly everyone, would agree that it'd be wrong for a father to make their family steal in order to pay. Rent or to get food, right? And, but many fathers do. Some fathers throughout history have. I don't say many, but many enough that it's more than, you know, one or two. Hundreds, thousands throughout history have done and asked their family to do immoral things. But that doesn't in any way, shape or form negate the role of the father in the next generation.
No.
Right? And it doesn't do anything to negate where he gets his authority and standards of right and wrong. But all of a sudden, when we get into the civil realm, in the civil government, they think because governments have usurped this authority of God. And created their own standards of right and wrong, that all of a sudden, what scripture lays out isn't true. And if you take Romans 13:4 combined with James 4:12, you get a clear picture. That it, the government is a minister of God for evil, excuse me, for good, and if you do what is evil, be afraid. His definitions. And then that's under, undergirded with James 4:12, that there's one law giver, meaning this is not up to your interpretation.
Correct.
Right? You're merely a minister of it.
Yeah, and it's like Peter says, for every prophecy, all scripture is not up to one's own interpretation. It goes back to what the Holy Spirit intended through the men that wrote it.
Yep.
And when we think about the law, the law has two main functions. When you think about law in Old Testament Israel, it's the word Torah, which means instruction. In and of itself, it doesn't give life, but it's a teaching. It's teaching men what should be pursued or avoided. And you read through Proverbs, and you see this with respect to wisdom all over the place, but it's not just teaching. Because included in that, when it says like shema, hear, it's not just listen to this and then choose what you want to do. And this is lost on us as Americans by and large. It's hear and obey. And so the second aspect would be obligating men to do what should be pursued or to avoid what must be avoided. And that's what, that's what the state does by means of the sword.
Yeah, exactly.
Punishment.
Yeah, and. You know, implicitly, there's even a distinction in scripture between what God calls sin and what God calls crimes. So there are things that are evil and born of evil, but yet that there's no codification for punishment, like lying. For example, is a sin, and all liars will have their part in a lake of fire. And then guess what? If the city council said, we're gonna do a liar's proclamation, that we're gonna proudly be liars, we would stand up.
Yeah.
We would be there just as quickly, even though we've all lied.
Yeah.
It's not about just us saying we're better than somebody else. It's about what God says is right and what God says is wrong.
We're not better than any, we recognize we're worse.
Exactly.
By God's grace, we've seen more of our sin and recognized it as sin. And, and there is a distinction between sins and crimes.
Right.
Abortion is not a crime right now.
No.
Murdering your child is not a crime, but it's still a sin.
Right. Yep.
So what about civil rulers? So we've already seen that they are appointed to the public for good. And that goes back to governments being instituted by God for the good of man, and they're ruled by men. And the primary good that they're supposed to do is in the civil sphere, civic justice. And we see it in Romans, we see it in 1 Peter 2, that they're to punish evil and praise those who do good. So 1 Peter 2:14. When Peter says, be subject, not obey, but be subject for the sake of the Lord to every human institution, whether to as a king, as one in authority. Or to governors as sent by him for the punishment of evil doers and the praise of those who do good. What is a proclamation?
Proclamation is praise.
A proclamation is praise.
Yes.
And so they're, they're saying, we want to give a proclamation of evil.
Of evil, right.
And so what should the Lord's people do? We should stand up and we should speak against that, but we'll get into that in a second.
But Joey, we're, we're not allowing liars to exist if we don't let them make a proclamation.
Right?
We're not allowing adulterers to exist if we don't let them make a proclamation.
You're taking away my self-worth and self-value.
Yeah.
You're not allowing me to sin.
Right.
And so that's a good point, though. What's in view with good and evil? There's moral absolutes, and it's deeds, it's actions.
Yes, right.
So the state doesn't have, like we've been talking about this whole time, authority over your thoughts.
No.
Over your beliefs.
Or even looking at you cross-eyed while you have a Jesus fish.
No.
No.
No. It, it's about, it's about deeds. And then the, the third thing that these, these men and that woman have forgotten is that they are subject to the law themselves. Because when you read through Romans 13, verse 1 is, every soul is to be in subjection to the governing authorities. And then the very next line says, for, because there's no authority except from God. So even if you are monarch, king of a realm, and humanly speaking, you have no one above you. You are still under authority.
Yes.
You're under God's authority, even as Pontius Pilate was. He was also under man's authority too. And when you read through all of scripture, this is what you see. Cyrus was under God's authority in Isaiah 45:1. Nebuchadnezzar, Yahweh says, is my servant in Jeremiah 27:6. So then that raises the question, why do these people on our battleground city council and those like them hate good laws?
Well.
Let's look at Romans 3:20. Romans 3:20. And I wonder if you've ever looked in this sense and seen this implication. It says, because by the works of the law, no flesh will be justified in his sight, for through the law comes the knowledge of sin. That's why.
Yep.
Knowledge of sin. What does, what, what did your conscience want to do before you were saved? What, what does my conscience want to do? Avoid the guilt.
Right.
That's why in psychology, there's, there's such a term as false guilt. What is false guilt? It's when you're feeling guilty for doing something that you enjoy and you want to do, but afterwards you feel guilty because it's sinful and it's wrong. And they teach you, just keep doing it until the guilt goes away, which is searing the conscience.
Right, and when scripture also says in, in Galatians, that the law is a tutor to bring us to Christ. So all standards of right and wrong, even though people don't follow it to its logical conclusion, are a reminder of that holy standard. Which we will stand before God someday. Under, right?
You can't come to, you're not gonna come to Christ unless you see your sin, because you're not gonna see a need for a Savior.
Right, right, and holy laws reflect like a mirror the sinfulness of your heart, because you wanna break them.
Yeah, and the more that you see your sin, the, the more disgusting it is. It's gonna, you're not gonna be able to enjoy and live your life.
Right.
But you don't want to submit the perceived authority that you have to Christ.
Yeah, and that's true, even if it's not a crime, that's true even with proclamations.
Yep.
Like, lying hasn't been a crime unless it's perjury, right? There's a context for that.
Yeah.
But just lying in public is not a crime.
Gossip.
Yeah, gossip's not a crime. Adultery. Isn't anymore a crime, and.
Homosexuality.
Right, so, but proclamations, at least the lying and adultery even not so much anymore. But it's fading fast, but there's a. A uniformity of mind in the community about those things being wrong, and so it has the same effect.
Yeah.
That it's a reminder that your heart is off. And so what is the point of this proclamation? Why are demonic forces pushing this? To mute the conscience of man.
And to tear apart families, the building block of society, which came before government.
Right.
Yeah.
Exactly.
And you, you see this throughout scripture. This is nothing new. This might be new to a lot of us in our lifetime for a variety of reasons. But in Psalm 2, it says, why do the nations rage and the peoples meditate on a vain thing? The kings of the earth have taken their stand, and the rulers take counsel together against Yahweh and against his anointed, saying. Let us tear their fetters apart and cast away their cords from us. What are the fetters and what are the cords? It's the law. It's the instruction. It's, I'm delegating authority to you to do good and oppose evil. Well, what happens when they want to oppose good and do evil? Now, this, this law is no longer a good thing. Now it's fetters. Now it's cords, because I don't get to do what I want to do.
Yeah, and what are those who call good evil and evil good?
Yeah, and Proverbs puts it this way in 21:15, to do justice is pleasure for the righteous, but is ruin to the workers of iniquity. And that's what we saw on that council. We, we heard it from them, and then they, they couldn't, it's so illogical. They couldn't even logically make their point in their argument.
No, they, they couldn't logically. Now sadly, some of those even on our side didn't make their points that well either. But it's not because our side can't. Their side can't. Make a consistent, logical argument. They can't even account for right and wrong.
No, they have no ground to stand on.
No, they have to borrow from our worldview in order to justify theirs. But that does, just cuz somebody doesn't argue something good, doesn't mean that that argument doesn't have a good argument. Ours has a good argument, the only argument. So moving along, let's talk about the, the wrong view of separation of church and state. And sadly, even Christians fall prey to this. This wasn't even in our constitution. Number one, our authority is the Bible, even if it wasn't our constitution, it wouldn't matter. But even in our constitution, it's not in there. It was designed to protect the church from incursion by the state, not the other way around. Cuz guess what? The founding fathers weren't morons like a lot of people today, incapable of thinking consistently. They know that all laws are a reflection of a morality, and that all morality is. By extension, a theological question, and it's all gonna be rooted in your view of God and your, and your underlying worldview based on that.
And all this comes out of a context in history. What, what's the context in history? It's Henry, it's, it's decades after Henry VIII.
Right.
Breaks away from the Roman Catholic Church and makes his own state church, and the state is ruling the church.
Yes, and a century or so after that, most of the good faithful pastors got expelled.
Yep, or executed.
Yes.
By the state.
Exactly, yes. So there's a context. It was all about protecting the church. But think about how nonsense that is, and they said this even in some of their talks, and in some of my Facebook discussions on the Battleground page. They say, you have no right to force your worldview on us. Every law does that. That's what a law is. So you have the right to bring your fundamental worldview, your concept of God, to the laws that you want passed, but we're not. Don't fall for that, Christian. It's a bunch of nonsense. No, everybody brings their worldview to the laws that they want passed.
And the idea about Christians not engaging in politics is a dereliction of duty.
Yep.
The responsibility that you have. It's separation of church and state is not separation of Christians and state.
Nope.
If it worked, and, but that's how it's often applied.
Right.
It's, it's spheres of authority. The church does not have authority over the state, and the state does not have authority over the church. They're separate spheres of authority, but there's individuals that belong to both.
Correct.
Somebody could be a pastor and could hold an office in the government.
Yep.
And what are they gonna, well, I'm not a Christian while I'm at work, then you're not a Christian at all.
Then that means I'm not an American while I'm at church, and so I'm just gonna hide out in the church and not pay my taxes.
Yeah. It doesn't make sense.
No.
And, and you have to think through that both ways.
Right.
I know some people will be upset that we criticize government, but you, you see people criticizing government throughout scripture. Even Jesus does some name-calling. When, with regard to Herod, that he said to them, go and tell that fox. And that's, he's not using a nice term there.
No.
But he's using an accurate one.
Yep.
And it's fitting for, for that time.
Yep, no, absolutely. We're the pillar in support of the truth, and that's all truth. And so finally undergirding this is that Christ is Lord of all. The state, the family, the, the church, all get their authority from him, and they have no authority outside of him. So he told Pontius Pilate, you would have no authority over me if it had not been granted to you from above, John 19:11. And so we need to remember this as, as, as Christians, and it's, you know, I. I don't know if it's helpful to get up at a city council meeting and give nothing but a sermon. However, I do think it's helpful to always bring the word to bear to remind them, because their conscience. Will bear witness against them. They, as creatures of God, have the law written on their hearts, and you need to remind them of the authority that they are under.
Yeah, that, that is important. That's, that's one of the, that's one of the responsibilities of the church. In 1 Timothy 3:15, it's, the church is the pillar in support of the truth. Jesus in John 18:36 and 37, in front of Pilate, says, for this reason I came, to testify to the truth. And his body is doing that for him also, as well as the members of the body are to be doing that. And we're to stand against evil.
Yes.
Wherever we see it, even if it is in the government, because the goal is that we would lead peaceful and quiet lives. And you can't do that under a totalitarian regime that's mandating your worship.
Yeah.
Christ is our only hope, and therefore the gospel is our only hope. And men and women need to hear the truth, and you can't just speak the gospel and then live like the world. For whatever reason, you might be justifying it. You, you can't do that. We have to be living out the gospel as we're proclaiming. Christ is king over all, and he is Savior of all men, especially those who believe. And so you're, you're going to receive the benefits of Christ being Savior, whether you're a Christian or not. Because the only reason that judgment is spared is because there's a people that he's bringing in. And our hope is that you would be part of that people, that you would repent, and that you would believe the gospel of Jesus Christ, that he. that He came to save sinners and that He defeated sin and death on the cross and rose again on the third day.
Yes, so, on that, let me just shoot down a couple false dichotomies that Christians fall prey to. Well, we can't change hearts, so, you know, therefore, you know, we should just preach the gospel. No, first of all, even God separates the two. God has His salvific work that He does in society and then He has His restraint of sin that He does in society. That's the whole point of civil government, right? And so the, the degree to which a government will restrain evil is gonna be directly proportionate to how Christian and, you know, proper religious that that society is. And there are gonna be benefits to that. That's the funny thing. That's the irony, is we're trying to protect these people from themselves. They will be beneficiaries of these policies and laws that reflect God's Word, whether they come to faith or not. That's like saying, "I'm not gonna feed a homeless person if he's not gonna come to faith." Right? If you're saying, "I'm not gonna pass laws because I can't, because, well, if they're not, I can't change their hearts." Well, if you can't change their hearts, don't give them a sandwich either.
Yeah, and if you hold that worldview, you're impugning God of sin because God gave the law explicitly saying, "This law will not change your heart."
Yes.
What you need is a heart change.
Yes.
I'm giving you a good law and this good law is not going to change your heart. But it should point you to the one who can by exposing who the Messiah is and exposing your own sin because you can't keep conformity to this law.
Right, and it's, it's acknowledging that the hearts can't be changed, which is why God needs to restrain evil.
Yep.
Right, so.
Yeah, yes. Or the, the other objection that Christians should not be involved in politics. No, Christians should not be mastered by politics.
Right.
There's another, again, the, the, the poor logic and the, the ability not to think isn't just on their side.
No.
No, it's equal across the board. It's generational.
Yeah.
And there's so many professing Christians that think in terms of false dichotomy. It's either A or it's B, when there might be more options or there, it might be degrees.
Well, classical education is dead in America and that's a large degree. It's almost like Satan had a plan.
Right?
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
People can't think anymore and you have a stewardship, especially in this country. And you have a responsibility before the Lord to love your neighbor in the way that you love yourself. And your neighbor also includes those yet unborn.
Mm-hmm, yep.
And so, even if you're, like, if you're against abortion, that's a political issue too. And you should be involved in that. While at the same time recognizing there are gonna be people that are born. What quality of life are they going to have in the country where you live? And how are you taking steps? Not that we're gonna be mastered by it, but scripture should govern every aspect of our life and to say, "Oh, we don't get involved in politics or we leave that off to the side." That is an aspect of life in which you're choosing not to live for the glory of God.
Right, if you can't walk and chew gum, chew gum at the same time in terms of living faithfully for Christ and being involved in the civil process, then I don't know why you go to work. Because obviously, you can't differentiate your responsibilities outside of the church context with your responsibilities for God.
Yeah, just, just think about your, your life in the family sphere, all the similarities to life in the church sphere, all the similarities to life in the civil sphere, the principles that undergird all of those that we find in scripture. And you'll see, and we have been silent for way too long in areas where we should have been speaking.
Amen.
And so I think we should give some, some application for individual Christians with respect to the civil government.
Yeah, go over those responsibilities really quick as we wrap it up here.
You should teach the truth. You should teach the whole counsel of God, even to the governing people. That, that's why you're here. You have the truth. A lot of people in the government do not. So teach them the truth while you're giving them the gospel. Hold them to the standard that God lays out in His Word and live and speak as if God has authority. And then live the truth by good example. Don't be a hypocrite. Show civil leaders biblical love. Think about John 11. Jesus loved them, therefore, He stayed two more days where He was at. Why did Jesus, when he found out Lazarus was sick and gonna die, stay two more days? It doesn't sound like love. We wouldn't do that if our, if our wife was, our wives were sick
Right.
in the hospital. We'd be over there as fast as we can. It wouldn't look like love to wait two days. But it tells you in that, when you read through it, it's for the glory of Christ. So you know that true love always has at its center, the glory of Christ. And then oppose sin in the civil sphere and expose sin in the civil sphere, Ephesians 5. Pray for your civil leaders and then submit in those areas where biblically you must. And then do not submit in those areas where biblically you must not.
Right, right. No, that's important. And, you know, we will continue to pray for our community here. Obviously, we're a wicked and perverse generation. But the freeing thing is, if you do this faithfully, Christian, the results aren't on you. The, the question is, is are you faithful or not?
Yep.
Right? So, our encouragement to you is to be faithful, be involved in your civil government to affect change for the glory of Christ. And if it's His will to spare our country, it'll be through faithful Christians who attempt to preach the truth to the government and the, and the public alike. And if He doesn't, it will still be for His glory. And so remember, as you're doing that, that there is no king but Christ.
And be lovingly obedient. God bless you.